PM on Wednesday, August 17th, 2022. And this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Council President Kate McAllister, also President, our counselors, Deb Rule, Joel Espiro, Andy Groth, Jason Welker, and Justin Dick. Mayor Shelby Rongstead is present, but because he is attending remotely, he has asked that I preside over the meeting.
Madam President.
Yes, ma'am.
Point of clarification, Councilman Espiro will be arriving late.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I saw him down there. Councilman Espiro will be. That's what happens when you're short. Anyway, please stand. We will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Are there any announcements from council? Excellent. Any announcements from staff?
Yes, Madam President, just quickly, at last night's planning and zoning meeting, our Planning and Zoning Commission picked up, moving it away from me a little bit, or moving me away a little bit more. Our Planning and Zoning Commission picked up conversations on the comp plan and the update to the comp plan. So for anyone that is interested in that discussion, that is available on our YouTube, YouTube channel, our city YouTube channel, people can go back and reference that as with all of our meetings. And in addition, we're just putting the finishing touches on a survey and a story that we will be posting to our webpage, to our Facebook page, and on our Engage Sandpoint mobile app. For anyone that doesn't have that, you can download it in the Google Play Store or in the iTunes Store, and you can access a public survey there to give input on some of the goals and vision statements that were in the draft comp plan. So those will be available at all of those locations before the end of the week this week.
Thank you. I highly encourage the public to, to really participate because we need your input to make these decisions. Also, I want to give a shout out to Engage Sandpoint. I've had several people come up to me so delighted that it works because they had potholes in their streets and they said, I got on Engage Sandpoint and then the pothole was filled. So thank you, staff, for doing that. It's always great when somebody has something positive to say, right? We will now proceed with the public forum portion of the meeting, which allows the public to address council regarding items listed on the consent calendar or on any topic not listed on the agenda. To accommodate those who wish to speak on general items during public forum, as well as those who wish to speak on specific business items on our agenda, a total of 20 minutes will be dedicated to public forum at the beginning of the meeting. If you would like to speak and did not have an opportunity to do so, we will provide that opportunity by reopening the public forum at the end of our regular agenda. If I may have your attention, please, I will recite the rules and procedure for commenting during public meetings. Those here in chambers who wish to speak will need to complete a sign up form available on the table by the door and hand it to the clerk. Do not approach the dais. If you have any written materials for council, please hand those to the clerk. If you're on Zoom and wish to speak, I will ask for public comment, and then you may raise your hand at that time. Please note that you will need a working microphone on your phone or computer to speak. When your name is called, you will see a prompt on your screen asking whether you would like to unmute. Then you will need to unmute yourself in order to be heard. Comments shall not be personally derogatory, nor shall they be personally directed at any individual, organization, or business. Public comment opportunities during meetings are for comments only. Do not direct any questions to council or to staff. Those in attendance, excuse me, those in attendance are not to disrupt this meeting or the business at hand that is being taken up by the council. Disruptive behavior includes clapping, disruptive noise, and comments or exclamations from the audience. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. Madam Speaker, has anybody indicated they would like to speak during public forum?
No, Madam President.
And no one online?
No.
Thank you. That concludes the public forum portion of this evening's meeting. We will now proceed to the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is $1,244,250.42, reflecting $447,057,050 for regular payables and $797,192.92 for payroll. Are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar? Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved. Second.
This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Groth?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Thank you. We have two public hearings on the agenda this evening, seeking public testimony regarding the fiscal year 2023 budget and changes to city fees. Notices for both hearings were published twice in the Bonner County Daily Bee, August 2nd and 9th. As a reminder for those in the room, if you wish to testify, you will need to complete a sign up form and hand it to the clerk. Those on Zoom will also have an opportunity to speak, and I will call for a raise of hands at that time. The first public hearing is for the fiscal year 2023 budget and use of foregone levying authority. On July 20th, 2022, council adopted the preliminary budget, declared intent to use foregone levying authority to both use and reserve foregone amounts and pursuant to Idaho Code Section 50-1002, scheduled the annual budget public hearing for this evening's meeting. Before we get underway with the hearing, I will first deal the floor to City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton.
Thank you, Council President. We have a fairly brief presentation tonight, and are prepared to answer any questions that council members have, as well as may come up relative to the public hearing based on comments and then questions council may have as a result of that. As an overview to the public participating in person and electronically, the way that we approach our budget every year in, in Sandpoint is we come to the city council in July of each year with our maximum budget amount. We're typically waiting for final numbers, and we saw that this year relative to property tax numbers from the assessors office and at a subsequent council meeting and finalize those. We do an overview of the budget at our second meeting in July with the council, and then we do follow up individual meetings with council members, take any questions that the public has, and do a follow up budget workshop in our August, our meeting in the beginning of August, and then this is our budget hearing. So by the time we get to the point that we are to our formal budget hearing, our full city budget has been published on our website, accessible to the public down to the line item and to go through our whole budget for a month. And we make that available to council members too. During that time, as we're taking questions, we will go in and sometimes do some refinement to narrative to clarify questions, but other than that, the overall budget isn't changing. And so what we have before you tonight is no different than what we have discussed over our last two council meetings. But tonight, as we have done in the past, I wanted to give you kind of a high level summary. We will take an overview again, a bit in our capital projects, and some questions have been raised over the last week relative to public members, members of the public that had questions, as well as council members. So what I've always done in my budget presentations in the past and will continue tonight is I gather all of those questions and address them in our PowerPoint as well tonight, so that the entire council is hearing it. And then council members are hearing public questions that we've gotten. Sometimes you individually have gotten them, and if there's further questions that we need to address relative to any of these items, we will do so. I have a snapshot of our fiscal year 2023 budget, our total budget. So this is revenue and expenditures is $49,655,534. As we discussed in our initial meeting, the primary reason for the increase from last year, this, which is this current year that we're operating into this next fiscal year 23 budget, is the $7.5 million donation that we received from Jim and Jenny Russell for the Traverse Court project. So you see that reflected in your revenue and then expense increase. That contract has been awarded and we're underway with design build of that project. City population, actually, I did not get back to addressing this number, and the Census Bureau has this at about 8,700 residents, according to our own estimates here at the city based on utility usage. And where we're looking at current vacancy rates, we have our population at about 10,000. The summer, it feels like a lot more than 10,000, I think, to most of us. A number of city employees included in the fiscal year 2023 budget is 120.4. As in years past, we end up with this point, something that is a weird number, and our point, something that is a weird number, is due to temporary seasonal staff. So we hire temporary seasonal staff in our parks maintenance area as well as streets maintenance. So in parks maintenance, we have temporary staff in the summer for maintenance of the parks. And then in the winter, when, when we're able to get temp seasonal employees, we hire them in our streets department to help with snow removal in the wintertime. So that's how we get at this kind of funky number because we have people that work one month to three months to up to six months in temporary seasonal capacity. I thought interesting as I was updating stats for this number. So I started doing budgets for the city fiscal year 2017. So kind of about five, five and a half years out from when I started working on budgets and pulling numbers. Active businesses, as of today, we have 1469 businesses in Sandpoint, which I think is surprising to most people. Well, the number of businesses that we have operating in our city limits, as well as the various types of business, as we've talked about with economic development presentations, we have a very rich tapestry of businesses. We're not just a town of tourism, which is one of the things that sets us apart, keeps our economy strong, and is a challenge in times of housing shortages and staffing shortages that all businesses are facing. From 2017 to current date, so this is looking ahead for our budget for 2022 or 2023, but all of these numbers are based on current 2022. So this is a five year difference. In fiscal year 2017, we had about 1,100 active business licenses. And so pretty substantial increase when you look at that to today's numbers. We have had a fairly significant business license activity, particularly this year. Most of that growth has been in construction and construction related industries. Our, most of our business licenses renew in the first quarter of the year, with most of them being due the first of the year. And then as business licenses are coming in throughout the year, we do a weekly review of what's coming in and processing of those pretty consistently from week to week. It's been two to five, actually, construction related businesses a week this year. It's been interesting. Water utility, and we use our water utility as opposed to our sewer utility because our water utility is larger in terms of number of customers because our sewer utility, we're serving only within city limits. Water utility, as we've discussed, is city of Sandpoint limits. It is Ponderay City Limits. It's Kootenay City Limits. It's some of the unincorporated area of the county as well. And technically, we are the water service provider behind much of the city of Dover area as well through a wholesale agreement with Serengeth Water District. So water utility customers as of today were at just under 4,800 customers. And as comparison, again, Michelle and I were looking at this after compared to 2017, we're up about between 300, 400 customers. So also fairly significant growth in water utility. We expect that to be even greater as we look at the number of building permits and site plan reviews that we're doing currently. Overview in terms of budget, and I just want to give some perspective to the public about this too. We're actually fairly well balanced at the city between our investment in our city budget for capital projects, master plans, and grant projects, and operations and maintenance. And this is always an important balance to look at as you are looking at your overall budget, especially in times like we're in now where we're seeing significant increases in wages. And there is the temptation to try to keep up with not only government, but then for government to keep up with private industry as well on the compensation front with employees. We do benchmark every year our compensation plan with governments up and down the state, as well as into Eastern Washington. And that's where we determine if we are falling in median. So we do a plus or minus for all of our ranges of 5% for all of our employee ranges. As we're looking at what's happening with governments across our area, many are not able to keep the kind of balance that we are because of the challenges with employment. You see more investments going over to the operations and maintenance side and away from capital projects and planning and grants. And the challenge with that is our capital projects is what addresses infrastructure needs, whether that be water, whether that be sewer, whether that be our roads, our sidewalks, kind of all the issues that we're hearing from citizens and are prioritized in our strategic plan adopted by city council is really addressing this backlog that we have with infrastructure. And then with the growth that we're seeing, investments in improvements in our infrastructure that are needed such as street, street widening, such as upsizing lines, such as sidewalk and pathway connectivity that we don't currently have. So for us, relative to our overall budget, when we get looking at comparison with jurisdictions, we have a very healthy balance again between what we're doing with capital projects, as well as what we're doing with operations and maintenance, where the budget that is presented to you, as we've added a few new positions into this next year budget, we feel confident that we have the stable revenues to sustain those positions moving forward, and that we are not investing so heavily in one side or the other. It's coming at the expense of our employees and our services, such as police services, fire services, snow maintenance, parks maintenance, et cetera, or getting out of balance on the other side where we're so invested in projects and future activity that we don't have the people here to address the service demands and expectations of the public. Some of the items of interest with questions that we've had over the last few weeks is we have budgeted in this year's budget $300,000 for a park's land purchase. You'll recall in last year's budget, we had $200,000 budgeted towards a park's land purchase. We did not execute complete a purchase of land before the end of, again, this fiscal year that we're still in. And so what you're seeing with that $300,000 budget is the carryover of $200,000, which isn't expanded, as well as an additional $100,000. Because again, we, we've been in some preliminary negotiations, and relative to costs of land, we added another $100,000 into the park's land purchase. What has been prioritized in our budget, both last year's budget, current year, and next year, is really acquisition of downtown waterfront and in meeting with the priorities of our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. You will recall that there was a discussion in our Parks and Recreation Master Plan about the need as we look at development and growth in the future, particularly in the north area of the city for additional parks land. But what was specifically noted in that Parks and Recreation Master Plan is one way to achieve that is through negotiations and discussions with the schools, that school playgrounds, schools property that they're using for school purposes during the weekdays when they're in session, those being parks, properties, and community space after hours and on the weekends, and the potential of even working together for improvements in that front. I'm pleased to say to council that we haven't been in discussions with our new superintendent with Lake Ponderay School District about these opportunities. The school district is in alignment with that thinking as well, and that opportunity to best utilize tax dollars for both purposes and reduce maintenance costs for both entities. So we are in discussions with the schools. Also, as you're seeing projects coming through, subdivisions coming through on the north side of the city, we have seen one particular project coming through. You'll have another one coming through, I think, probably in the next couple of months, where you see dedication of open space, trail connectivity, parks in those projects. So we also negotiate those when we have PUDs or other subdivision developments that helps us in achieving that balance of open space, parks land, even if another jurisdiction or a homeowners association owns that. But there is a benefit to the broader public and the community as a result of that. In parks trails funding, last year, we had budgeted $50,000 for parks trails funding. That was our first year of doing a set aside of dollars. And really, again, that was in line with our Parks and Recreation Master Plan because they had identified in terms of deficiencies in a number of our parks, our pathway systems in the parks. So that's really what we're talking about with parks trails. This is capital funds. So it's capital infrastructure that we are investing in, and it has been identified that we've got trail improvements needed in Lakeview Park and in Traverse Park, as well as at City Beach, where we've got some deferred maintenance or failing infrastructure. And in addition to that, and as a result of that, it affects really ADA accessibility. So I know that is a priority for Maeve, particularly as we are in the planning right now with the focus on the Travers Centennial and Great Northern Parks. I think what we will end up seeing out of this project is some realignment of the trail into Traverse Park for the, the new structure going in there, as well as improvements in the pathways we're moving through with parks projects. So this 50,000 was rolled over into fiscal year 23. And there is specifically a line item called Parks Master Plan Projects Match, and that is a set aside for us to be able to leverage matching grant funds for these types of projects. And in fact, last week or earlier this week, Maeve and I had started the week with a meeting with the grant representative from the Land Conservation Fund about some significant improvements at Traverse Park Centennial Great Northern in addition to the facility. But we have parking lot pathway, as well as field improvements that are also slated in that master plan. So these dollars are rolled into for match. So something like Land Water Conservation Fund, that is a grant where we are required to provide a 50% match to projects. So we have rolled these funds over. They're just not specifically sitting in trails funding. They're in the overall parks master planning, and certainly trails, and particularly ADA accessibility are significant priorities for Maeve. In economic development, you see a fairly significant increase in its in economic development and culture services is what the specific line item is in the budget. We have had a set aside in our budget of $50,000 for the past several years for economic development strategic priorities. We partnered with the Bonner, Bonner County Economic Development Council and assisted with funding a strategic plan for the Economic Development Council Corporation in this last year. They have a draft plan but are further refining it. And as one of the activities under that strategic plan, they're also doing some restructuring, getting input from the community, and really redefining the role of that organization relative to city and county governments throughout the county, as well as representation of private business. They play a key role for us in ways that we're not able to do with existing, existing staffing, as well as in thinking of overall county priorities and how our priorities fit into those. For example, the Economic Development Corporation has input into and it works with the Bonner County on tax relief for, for commercial industrial improvements that they may choose to provide property tax relief to. So aligning those to strategic priorities and what types of businesses and what types of employees best benefit our community. For example, that's a role of Bonner County Economic Development Corporation. Similarly, we partnered, partnered with the EDC a couple of years ago when funding was made available, both through federal funding passed through the city, as well as through private grant sources to provide relief to businesses experiencing downturn relative to COVID. So Bonner County Economic Development Corporation administered a grant program with that funding. Some of that was passed through ARPA funding that the city had received. But then on the city side, we were able to partner with EDC and then work with the Anovia Foundation to match that investment that was made by the city with dollars to support businesses. All of the dollars that flowed through the city were invested in supporting businesses operating based here in the city. With the Anovia dollars that were also passed through, the majority of those dollars were also invested into businesses that are working, operating in the city.
And I was on that grant jury, and so that was, it was really a great program. Helped a lot of businesses.
What we've committed to with Bonner County Economic Development Corporation, and this hasn't changed, is this is a set aside for economic development strategic priorities to ultimately be determined with investment by council. So if they are, if they have a strategic plan and want the city to partner and other governmental entities, they need to come back and give us a proposal for that. There was some misunderstanding this week that we are funding the salary of the executive director of the Bonner County Economic Development Corporation. That's not accurate. We haven't done it in the past. That is not necessarily what's envisioned in this budget. Again, it's supporting that strategic priority and a potential investment when they come back and give us a proposal. It is not unusual in communities that you see your local governments partnering with the Economic Development Corporation, just like that, like we're doing here. They function kind of as an economic development arm as a city. They have a big picture. They're working for the city benefit. So commonly, when businesses are looking to relocate here, Department of Commerce, maybe they've started at the state level, but Department of Commerce are looking at sites here in the city, are assessing viability of operating in the city. They put them in touch with the Bonner County Economic Development Corporation that really helps them work through those processes. Typically, we'll see them come in and meet with us city staff at some point, asking about doing business in the city or making connections. But the bulk of the work is done by the Economic Development Corporation as opposed to us having staff necessarily doing that work. So that's kind of how that works in tandem. And also, so that is again, carryover of dollars. And that is consistent with what we budgeted over the past few years. The increase that you're seeing in Economic Development and Culture Services is the addition of $45,000 for the Mayor's Initiative Housing Task Force and Workforce Housing Project. So you will recall that back in late December, council approved a $20,000 grant to support this effort. And this has kind of been a phased process. So there was a rural development block grant that had been awarded. And in addition, Blue Cross Found, our Blue Cross Foundation of Idaho had also awarded a grant. Some of those dollars were used to support the recent Leland Study, looking at trends and housing need and projections and making some recommendations. And council saw a draft form of that report as well as had a presentation on a draft report. Leland Consulting is in the process of finalizing their report, which will come back to council again and includes some more specific recommendations and address some of the areas where council had some questions at that last presentation. We have received a proposal from a group. We had put out an RFP earlier this year on developing workforce housing strategic plan, went and met with the group, very experienced group down in Boise, doing this work with resort cities actually around the state and got some refinement with them. And we're back talking about some next steps. So actually, you'll see this come back to council in the near future, probably in the next month or so, with a proposed, a proposed plan forward relative to an effort on this front. And one of the, one of the discussions that we're having with this group and where they bring a lot of experience is in looking at, looking at housing authorities, multi-jurisdictional authority, housing authorities. And you will recall that from our Leland Report, one of the things that we heard from them is that Sandpoint standalone as a jurisdiction is not in a position to address this issue. Looking at something like a multi-jurisdictional housing authority would be a best path forward. This group has significant experience in both putting those together, bringing jurisdictions together on a vision. So that's kind of the direction that we're heading right now with bringing that back before council for consideration. And then finally, the bulk of the increase in this budget is actually our grant, our $100,000 grant from the National Endowment for the Arts. So we received a total of $100,000. $50,000 of that grant, approximately $50,000 is actually funding our arts and historic preservation officer, Heather Upton. So her salary and benefits and for her to begin working on implementation of the Arts and Culture Master Plan was one of the elements funded under this NEA grant. The remaining 50,000 was awarded for a pass-through grants program for arts organizations in our community. And I believe you will see what this grant program may look like at your next council meeting. Heather's been drafting the Grant Guidelines Grant Application. That's going to the Arts Culture Historic Preservation Commission. And most likely will be coming to you at your first meeting in September for approval to announce this grants program. Lastly, in terms of items of interest, travel and training was the question. We did have an increase of 15,500 in our travel and training budget, citywide travel and training budget. And we have been maintaining our investment in really it's training and development of our employees in accordance with our given council priorities of professionalism, training and growth opportunities for our workforce. Excuse me. Of the 15,500 increase, 11,000 of that is attributable to fire employees. What you will recall is when about, it was in last year's budget, when we entered into our new joint powers agreement with Segal and Westside Districts, Fire Districts, all of the employees of the city and of both districts came in under the umbrella of the City of Sandpoint. So the majority of your increase here in travel and training is related to travel and training of those additional 16 employees that have now joined our employee ranks. And those costs actually are borne back by the districts and reimbursed to the city. So there are employees, but they are the employees based on what station. They are stationed at, are paid for by that relative taxing jurisdiction. So employees here at the Sandpoint Station are paid by the City of Sandpoint. Employees at the Segal Station, the Carywood Station, they are paid for by the Segal Fire District. And at the Dover Station and the Renco Station, those are paid by Westside Fire District. So. Urban Forestry, our fiscal year 2022 budget has $50,000 for our urban forestry program. Our fiscal year 2023 budget as presented also has $50,000 for urban forestry. I, I think where there has been some question about urban forestry and has this been included in the budget is urban forestry used to be its own kind of standalone area in the city. We had GIS and urban forestry together. Two years ago, we moved urban forestry into Parks and Recreation and they've been overseeing the program. So you will see 20,000 in the budget that is in our Parks and Recreation Planning and Cultural Services. Right now, Maeve, our Parks Planning and Development Manager functions as our Chief Urban Forester and manages our urban forestry program. So this $20,000 is for arborist services primarily. We've used this also for neighborwoods program in the past as well. You, we anticipate most likely next year, this investment is going to be primarily, if not solely, in the arborist services. You have a presentation coming to you next month. We've been in master planning on our urban forestry program. And one of the things you are going to hear out of that effort is that we really need to revisit with full recommendations on how we are funding and managing our urban forestry program. That historically, we have not been paying enough attention and are not effectively structured for maintaining our urban forest. But we keep investing in neighborwoods. And his recommendation is that we increase our investment in our maintenance before we're just starting to plant more trees because we are seeing some challenges and failures in our urban forest throughout the city. And it's a result of lack of maintenance. So under our current urban forestry program, all responsibility for maintenance of, of trees and for costs of tree removal is the responsibility of the adjacent property owner. It's not the city. When we are using our urban forestry dollars for arborists, most typically, we're paying for arborist services in the downtown core, which we do maintain. And occasionally, we've had arborists, we went through a big effort last year where we had an arborist come out and actually do some of the rights of way because we were having issues with overgrowth and lack of maintenance, then blocking view sheds in intersections and blocking stop signs. And that starts, it's a challenge for motorists. It's a liability and it's a safety issue, particularly for pedestrians and bicyclists. And it's a liability issue for the city. So we did, we did do some, we did do some work in that area. We've also used budget this year to actually come out and do an assessment of our urban forest all throughout the city and actually up into the watershed. So you'll be hearing that as part of your presentation next month. We do, we've included in this 10,000 in Parks Maintenance Services. That's specifically for arborist services as well. So that's along pathways that we're maintaining, that Parks and Recreation is maintaining. That's for in our parks themselves. And with this year's budget, we're just getting ready to undertake a pretty significant contract using the combination of both of these budgets for an arborist to do some work, particularly in Lakeview Park, around the tennis courts. We're having a lot of shedding and potentially are going to get them a tree failure without some maintenance there, as well as some of our other areas in our, in our parks. So once in a while, we've had an issue due to a storm where we have a tree and whose right of way is that in? And we've had to do a hazard treatment removal. But again, responsibility as per city code is the adjacent property owner. Finally, we do maintain our own beyond where an arborist is needed within, again, our parks and our pathways. And we maintain a budget for supplies and costs for our Parks Maintenance crews to maintain our urban forest as well. And we partnered with the Department of Lands and the Hazard Tree Arboretum that they've assigned to us in the city to work on our urban forestry program, to do training for our park staff. And we are hoping at some point and have it built into our compensation system to have one of our Parks Maintenance Staff hopefully actually obtain our first certification and have certification pay associated with that.
Excuse me, Council President. Can I hang out here in just this space for a little bit? I just, I've got a couple of questions. So, and this predates me. So I'm kind of curious as to how we got to a place where we're, where we don't have an arborist. I don't recall not having an arborist. Did we at one point in time?
No.
Very interesting. So I really like driving around this park that I call a city and it's beautiful. And we have these amazing trees. And we also have more frequent storms that are impacting issues. And per, you saying per city code, the, we'll just say a tree issue is the adjacent homeowner's responsibility.
Correct.
So it sounds like we are developing potentially a plan to bring this back under the city's responsibility and maybe help some of our citizens that maybe are delinquent in their responsibilities to their trees or the city stepping up in their responsibility to embrace our urban forest. Again, I'm, this is just me thinking out loud. This sounds like a really great idea.
So I haven't seen the final report from our consultant who's working on our master plan, who by the way, does this for jurisdictions all over the country. However, based on discussions we have, I suspect what council is going to hear is a suggestion about the city taking a more significant role in managing and maintaining the urban forest along the right of ways, if that is a priority for the city. Funding for that will certainly bring its own challenges. I feel that we have ability in this budget next year to address some of that. And we can talk about it when his presentation comes into council. But I believe that is going to be the recommendation most likely because of, there has been a not particularly effective effort in educating and outreachings citizens about their responsibility and, and what this means. And also there's inherent conflict in this because it is a public tree. It's in the public right of way. The adjacent property owner is then responsible for the tree in the public right of way, but yet can't remove the tree if they don't want the tree in the public right of way. There's just kind of an ongoing conflict that occurs around the urban forest, the way that our program is currently structured. And again, I think you will see recommend, you will hear recommendations from him about that, including the city taking on more of her role.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Council President, may I ask a question? Jennifer, thanks. That's all really interesting. I agree with Andy that this is something that's worth looking at, particularly when it comes to our pedestrian priority networks. As we invest in the build out of our sidewalk networks, it's so easy for a poorly maintained tree to kind of ruin the experience that we've tried to improve by spending half a million dollars and paving a sidewalk, for example, when branches are hanging at eye level. And I being six foot six perhaps suffer more than the typical citizen because I'm constantly ducking around branches and in the right of way. I had one question about the difference between the arbor, arborist and the forester. This $50,000, you mentioned the watershed, but correct me if I'm wrong, is, is timber management in our watershed under the utility? It's not under Parks and Rec. Is that correct? So this does not include any sort of management of our forest in city property in the watershed?
Correct. It doesn't. But when we brought on somebody to really look at our urban forestry program, we had him look within the city, but we had him also do some analysis up in the watershed. I think to your point that yes, we have a separate contract with Mike Wolcott, who works with us and does timber management in the watershed. His view of looking at timber management is a little bit different than the view of an arborist with this urban forestry view because he's not necessarily looking at it from the standpoint of users up in the watershed and kind of those same issues you brought up about the trees sidewalk conflicts than the trees. And as we're allowing some recreational use up in the watershed, how do those two things work together? So our individual who is reviewing our urban forestry plan, Jim was actually up touring the watershed with Mike Wolcott. So we had two eyes looking up there in a conversation. And you'll see some of that information again coming through with urban forestry. But as you point out, the watershed is kind of its own thing and timber management is budgeted in the waterfront.
Okay. One more question. Could you clarify some of the, I'm sure I could dig into code and find this, but what are some of the responsibilities of property owners in terms of maintaining trees in the right of way? For example, my anecdote of
Yes.
Branches, branches in the head. There, I can think of a stop sign. I think it's Michigan and Florence or Michigan and Marion where for about three years now, I haven't seen the stop sign because there's, there's branches hanging directly in front of it. Is that the city's responsibility to make sure that stop signs are visible? Or is it the property's, property owner's responsibility to make sure that branches aren't blocking stop signs, for example?
Well, it's technically an adjacent property owner's responsibility to make sure that they're trimmed up. And that applies to trees as well as to, as well as to bushes or to hedges that are along property lines so that the sidewalks are, are usable, passable, not only just for somebody squeezing through, but are actually ADA accessible. And so that's the responsibility of the adjacent property owner. We have gone through again and done some trimming because we've got a tree hanging over on the sidewalk or on a stop sign and that becomes a safety issue. Technically, it's the responsibility of the adjacent property owner. Our pros do actually a fantastic job of following up with property owners on these responsibilities. And we get a fair number of complaints about these issues through Engage Sandpoint.
Right. Yep.
And so they are making contact with property owners about what they need to do. And then it's not uncommon that then they don't quite know how to trim the tree or this, this becomes the issue again with expecting an adjacent property owner to take care of a tree. When do you do it? When do, should you have a certified arborist? Do you have the right certified arborist? Are they actually certified? Are they knowledgeable? If you have a tree that you consider a hazard, who's determined that is a hazard? Have you seen a tree fall down that is a similar type of tree somewhere else in town? Now you're concerned about yours. Has an arborist told you, is that arborist a certified for a hazard tree assessment? Has an arborist told you, is that arborist a certified for a hazard tree assessment? Fortunately for us, if you have a tree, you're an adjacent property owner, you're concerned about a tree, street tree that is adjacent to your property and the safety of that tree. We will go out and have a hazard certified arborist with a hazard tree assessment, go out and assess that tree. And that is at no cost to the, to the property owner. Actually, that's at no cost to the city too. That's as part of our agreement with Department of Lands actually funds that position. So when we look at actually our investment into our urban forestry program, we've included our supplies, we've included our contract services. What we haven't included in here is actually Maeve's time that she spends managing the program. We have her tractor time. That's just included in our regular budget as well as our parks maintenance staff for some of the pruning and maintenance they're doing for the trees downtown. And then we also have Garth that is under our, our, a contract with Department of Lands that does this work for us. It's not included here because we don't actually pay for it. And we only started those services and took advantage of that Department of Lands grant program two years ago when we moved this program over to parks. Prior to that time, we did not have someone that was free to the city providing these level of services. So in many ways, I would say our urban forestry program and what we've been doing over the last few years, we've actually been doing some pretty significant improvements to the program. But you're going to hear that there's much room for more improvement. One of the other findings has been even our list of street trees needing to make some changes to what are street trees. Another consideration that we're in discussion about is when we're approving, for example, a new development and there is a requirement, a subdivision that they have trees. Is anybody going out and doing an inspection that they are the right trees, the right size of trees is provided in code? So we are kind of working through some of those administrative improvements now.
And Jennifer, has there been any prior like training for citizens on how to take care of their trees? Because being married to a forester, he has a lot of, he's like, why are these trees dying? And it's, I just don't think people know, you know, and I, I don't, I'm not aware of any training that they had previously or that the city offered previously on how to take care of trees.
I think it's been in bits and spurts. So, and this year at Arbor, at the Arbor Day event, there were actually quite a number of workshops this past spring. And we're looking at keeping that going moving forward. But I think that's, we've relied on this urban forestry program and that effort. This is an example, once again, where we've relied on a committee to oversee and implement these efforts. And our tree committee has done a great job. But we're also looking at now with having added like Maeve's position with the experience, bringing our parks maintenance staff up to speed with more experience on this, really bringing some of this expertise in-house and supporting and working with a committee or maybe a future commission versus the committee. I don't know how he's going to come in with this recommendation, but making some of those improvements moving forward and for the city from a vegetarian standpoint, from an administrative standpoint, really taking more ownership of this program if it in fact continues to remain in our code and it is a priority.
And Councilman Mulker, so you're saying you don't want me to trim your trees?
You would not be able to reach the branches that are affecting me. No offense.
None taken.
It's sorry. So those are the questions I had from public and the council members, but that doesn't mean we can't do more. I'm just going to shift on you here for a second and go over to actually our budget booklet online again, so for anybody that wants to follow there. And we can, we can visit any components in there. Once again, property tax, we had a pretty long discussion about that at the last council meeting. The only thing I would highlight in this, once again, for anybody who missed our last discussion is included in our, I know, where is my? Property tax relief, I know, is in there somewhere. Up or down, sorry. There we go. I would highlight again that taxpayers in Sandpoint are experiencing $208,052 in property tax relief shared across all of the taxpayers as a result of excess local option resort city taxes. So these were excess taxes collected as a result of our lodging tax. When we collect more in revenues as a result of a resort city tax than what is budgeted by Idaho State statute, those excess dollars then result in property tax relief for taxpayers. So you are seeing that reflected in the fiscal year 2023 budget. We had a discussion again at our last meeting about our property tax levy going down. And there was a article, a couple of articles in our local media this week because the county's also been trying to emphasize this point of, we've seen this significant increase in market value based on assessments. And so the average increase again is 50%, it's 50% across our, our total properties in the city. But dependent where you fall, that doesn't necessarily mean a property tax increase for you this year with city property taxes. So, and actually percentage wise and where you fall in that, it's kind of the same sort of, it's the same methodology with county and other taxing districts as well. So what makes Sandpoint unique from other jurisdictions like the county or the library district or the school district is we have that property tax relief as a result of excess collected lodging tax. So the other jurisdictions don't have that. Capital projects. Again, we've included in our budget book, we've got some significant capital projects actually across all of our areas of the city. Most particularly, you will see they are significantly increased infrastructure investments. You see that in both the water and the wastewater utility. And Greg's done a couple of presentations about improvements that are needed on that front with distribution pipes and collection and distribution pipes throughout the city. And then as noted in prior presentations, we've included a substantially increased number of streets, right of ways, which includes our sidewalks and pathway, capital improvements. And some of these projects are based on hopefully voters passing the increase and extending the local option tax as approved by city council to go on the ballot this fall. So if there are any questions on any of these projects, I'm happy to answer those.
Council have any questions? All right.
Finally, I think all that I have specifically for a presentation, unless there are other questions at this point from Councilwoman President.
Thank you. And I know for myself, I appreciate the time spent individually on the budget and the questions. And because yes, we get a lot of questions from people out in the community and to bring those forward and have those answered. I personally, I really appreciate it and you taking the time. So thank you. We will now proceed with the public hearing on the fiscal year 2023 budget and use the foregone levying authority. Please note that the same rules and procedure for public comment as noted earlier will apply to our public hearings. The public hearing is now open. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. Madam Clerk, let's start with city residents. All hands will now be lowered on Zoom. For those attending on Zoom, if you are a resident inside Sandpoint city limits and you wish to speak, please raise your hand at this time. Madam Clerk, are there any city residents who signed up here? Oh, sorry. Is there anybody on Zoom?
No, Madam President.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any city residents who've signed up here in chambers to testify in this matter?
Madam President, no one has signed up to testify on the budget.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this issue? Thank you. Madam Clerk, just as a point of clarification, can you tell how many people there are on Zoom?
Madam President, there are four members of the public currently on Zoom. I know that two are members of the media.
Thank you very much. The public hearing is now closed. Pursuant to Idaho Code Section 50-1003, city council shall, prior to the commencement of the new fiscal year, pass an ordinance to be termed the annual appropriation ordinance. With the public hearing now closed, we will move on to item, to agenda, item 7A-1, consideration of adoption of the appropriation ordinance. And we'll begin with council deliberation and any final questions for staff.
No questions or comments from you?
No questions, no comments? Thank you. An ordinance of the city of Sandpoint, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, termed the annual appropriation ordinance pursuant to Idaho Code 50-1003, appropriating 49,650, wait, that's not right, 49 million, is that correct? Okay, sorry, it's been a long day. 655,534 to defray the necessary expenses and liabilities of the city of Sandpoint, Idaho for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2022, levying a sufficient tax upon the taxable property and specifying the objects and purpose for which said appropriation is made, providing for severability and an effective date. I would entertain a motion that the ordinance pass its first reading by title only.
So moved. Second.
This will be a roll call though?
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Spuro?
Yes.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
The ordinance has passed its first reading by title only. I would entertain a motion that the rules requiring, requiring three separate readings, once the, in the ordinance entirety be suspended and that the ordinance pass its second and third readings under the suspensions of the rules.
Moved.
Second.
This will be a roll call vote?
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor Spuro?
Yes.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
The motion passed. This ordinance is considered read, passed and adopted under suspension of the rules. And the fiscal year 2023 Sandpoint city budget is hereby approved and adopted, including the expenditure of funds for the 2022-2023 renewal term for Columbia Bank Lease Number 9291000596. Next are two resolutions to allow the city to use its foregone levying authority. First, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for intent to use foregone levying authority.
So moved.
Second.
This will be a roll call vote?
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Spuro?
Yes.
Motion passes. And for the final action under this item, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution to reserve the fiscal year 2023 foregone amount for potential use in subsequent years.
So moved.
Second.
This will be a roll call vote?
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Spuro?
Yes.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Motion passes. We will now move on to city fees. On July 20th, 2022, the council scheduled a public hearing for this evening's meeting to consider adoption of new fees and fees set to increase more than 5%. Before we get underway with the public hearing, I will yield the floor to City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton.
Thank you, Council President. In your agenda packets and posted up on our website was a full itemization of all of our city fees. That has also been up for the last month. And there are, it included red line version of all of the city fees that are new or will be increased or proposing an increase over 5%. For this particular presentation, we will highlight all of those fees that are new or over 5%. But if council members have any questions about any of the other fees, we're happy to address those as well. The fee schedule as proposed to council included five new city fees. One of those is a short-term rental violation penalty of $100 per day. This will be the first time this is on our fee schedule, which was simply an oversight. It has been included in city ordinance since 2018. So this also puts it on our fee schedule. When in Idaho, local jurisdictions are required that any fees that they assess, all of their fees must be on an adopted fee schedule and those are the only fees that we are able to assess. So the fact that this penalty existed in an ordinance, it doesn't give us the ability to ever assess it. It needs to be on our fee schedule. So this is cleaning that up and making sure that it is on our fee schedule as well. The second new city fee that was added is relative to our mortgage at City Beach as well as at Windbag. In our fee structure for our marinas, our city residents have a rate. If you are living in, outside of the city, you pay a 25% higher mortgage fee than a city resident has paid. Based on input that we have received from council members as well as the public, we are proposing an additional tiered fee. And that is an additional 25% above the non-Bonner County, beyond the outside city limits to reflect a city resident fee, a Bonner County resident fee and an outside Bonner County resident fee, which is again another tier of 25% higher. We have about 10 to 15, I think, of our mortgage customers actually live outside of Bonner County. And as council will recall, we're in the process of doing a Parks and Recreation Operations Plan update. Likely you may see us come back with some recommendations about prioritization moving forward. But our structure to date has been, if you are an existing mortgage customer, you're allowed to renew the subsequent year in, for a set period of time before we open up slips. Again, we will revisit it, but if we stay with the current structure that we currently have, this will add another tier for anyone that is outside of Bonner County.
Madam President, may I ask you, may I ask a question? This is just a clerical thing, but is it possible that we could just refer to them as non-residents? Since when you read through the fee scale, there is city resident box, there's a Bonnie, Bonner County resident box. And I think it would, for simplicity, anybody else is a non-resident of our county and city. I mean, residents not inside Bonner County seems wordy and confusing.
The wording is outside Bonner County residents. Do you want to change that to outside Bonner County or?
I just think we should refer to them as non-residents. They're not residents of our city and they're not residents of our county. I mean, you could put it as state residents, but I don't think that's what your point is. And that's a clerical thing, but for whatever reason, it just drives me nuts.
We felt for administration for staff, this actually was the clearest. Because in our, we actually have, and I had pulled the list even look at, was it even worth it to add this tier? Because if we don't have any, why add the tier? Or if we have one, why add the tier? So Kami pulled the list for me and we actually have several that are outside of state residents. And we have a few that are outside country residents. So they are actually Canadian residents that are at our, that are at our marinas. So.
They're non-residents.
Yes. But for this, for us, when staff are just.
That's fine. I'll drop it. I'll drop it. I can handle it. But it just seems really confusing. You're either a resident of the city or a resident of the county or you're a non-resident. But if it works for staff, that's fine.
Okay. We might find we have to fine tune it next year. fine tune it next year. There's a question about interpretation on it. But in reviewing this, we felt this was the clearest, and staff understood how to apply the fees.
That's the most important piece.
There was an increase in our planning and engineering fees for notifications of two hundred and fifty dollars. This is our cost to publish a notification in the paper. So passing that cost on to the applicant, which is consistent with every other jurisdiction up here in North Idaho. So we were getting consistent with what others were doing. In the past, we had that kind of embedded in our fee. This is specifically identifying that there is that fee for notification, and it's a publication fee is really what it is. We have added a new fee for building code violations. If you have unsafe building site, it's restricted. We put a stop work on a site, then it is a violation of a hundred dollars a day. What it means for us is when we have a building code violation, and for example, we have a stop work, we are by there every day, making sure that there is, their work is in fact stopped. There is a reason we put a stop work notification on it. So again, it helps recover the costs for our building official or building inspector to be following up on these things. And then finally, an additional fee of a hundred and forty dollars and fifty cents for a will serve assessment letter. And this is for will serve, this for our letter for an assessment, this is required for plating, and are part of reviewing by the state. So it's again passing along development costs to the party doing the project. Any question on new fees? This is what it looks like on your fee schedule. Sarah is really good at doing the snapshots.
Madam President, can you just define what a short-term violation, for short-term rental violation is? Is that somebody who is found to have been operating without a permit?
Yes.
And presumably, we would then determine how many nights they had rented for without a permit, and levy a fine of that many nights times one hundred? Is that the idea?
Yeah, what's happening with this is typically we've notified that you, that you're in violation of our short-term ordinance, and if you are continuing to operate, then you are subject to a penalty of a hundred dollars a day.
So it's after notification continued, subsequent nights would be, okay, understood.
Yep. And again, this takes it out of our city ordinance and puts it into our fee structure.
And for clarification, a violation would be anybody who doesn't have a permit or are there any, is there any way you could violate the policy while holding a permit? Are there any other, like, how would you define a violation in any other way? Could somebody who has a permit violate the policy in some way?
There could be different circumstances. One that jumps to mind is you got a short-term rental permit, and by right, because you are the homeowner, you have a short-term rental, so you are by right. And you are not living at the, at the residence, and it turns out you've come in under one, and actually you're subject to our limitation of the one percent of household units in the, in the city, that thirty-five number that we have currently.
So somebody, somebody who has a permit for, for an owner-occupied rental, but it turns out that they're not actually living there and renting out the house would be in violation.
So you're in violation because you don't have the correct permit. You've either misrepresented, or you didn't get a permit. So that's again, when this fee comes up, we unfortunately have had a recent case of that. The increase is greater than five percent. Again, with our parks fees, we are doing a full review on our parks fees, our parks fee structure, and we'll be discussing that later this fall with council as part of our operations review. But one adjustment that we did make relative to our parks field usage is an increase for trash removal and cleaning at the site. And this is directly related to how much time and our cost for city staff to use it. So the way that this works is for any of our users using the grandstands, using any memorial field, the field itself, this isn't a mandatory fee. If they're doing their own trash removal and it's cleaned up, then there isn't a fee for trash removal and cleanup. It is if you have inadequately performed and left us with trash or a mess. And so now we're cleaning it up. We go back and bill you for those charges. Or if you have an event there, and for whatever reason, you don't want to clean up after yourself, we will clean up and we will bill you for it. So this is reflecting actually what our staff time is for those services. You have a couple of changes relative to proposed changes for parking citations and dog citations. And this is based on the recommendation of the police chief. And again, taking into consideration what surrounding jurisdictions are doing, as well as the time involved with following up with these. And unfortunately, one of our challenges becomes, we, we've tried to have, there's that balance of having a fee people can afford to pay that you hope is enough of a deterrent, and sometimes your fee isn't enough to be a deterrent. So we're increasing fees. So you see that reflected in both parking and dog. Just a reminder for council and the public that we are in the process of doing a parking study, and I believe that also the results of that should be coming your way probably next month. We're waiting for them to, they're calculating, tabulating all their data now. So I expect that you're going to have a first round in parking data next month also. Infrastructure and utility services, general labor rates, sometimes we are having to go out and perform labor. It's requested that we do something. We're generally not doing private work. But in the case that we're having to do labor and it's a billable charge, this is reflecting actually what our costs are. And then finally, we had some changes in planning and engineering with passing along costs and upgrading those to actual costs for development. So development paying for development. Any questions?
Barking dog, how much bark?
Well, I, Chief is not here tonight, but it's not one bark.
That falls under noise ordinance too, like the, the timeframes of noise ordinance and such.
My kids bark.
Relative to the barking dogs, we're typically out giving you a warning if we're out again. So even under a first offense with a barking dog, if we're out there, a first time, you're getting a warning if we keep coming out there.
Austin Chief, with the, how much is too much? What about kids barking? That'd be another question.
What? Well, I haven't seen one of those unengaged yet.
My kids are crazy.
Anything's possible.
Madam President?
Yes.
Just like to ask about the memorial field pickup. I'm, I'm just curious as to who would determine that. So just as, as an example, fortunately, we've got great use out of the grandstands, and people have a great time in there. And there is a, some folks do a great job picking it up, others would rather pay fee, like we've talked about. My, my thinking though is who is the one that's determining whether they're going to have a fee levied on them when they do a good job of picking up? But somebody spilled some ice cream, and they don't have the water to clean it up. And this is again, just, that's not even hypothetical. I've seen it, and I've experienced it. I've seen a group of people do as good of a job as they possibly can. I would like to think that we'd give some, not necessarily leniency, but we'd have some grace with, they did a good job. Jason?
I'm gonna have Jason come up because he can.
Perfect.
He's gonna have more hands-on knowledge of when we've gone out, like a specific instance, like how bad it is. And it's not often. In fact, it's extremely rare.
So maybe you could advocate to our public while there are so many listening right now? Yes, for sure. We can congratulate our public for learning how to take care of nice things.
I mean, most of our users do do a good job. There are a few instances that we have where we have to do additional pickup. We expect our staff to have to come in and do a certain amount of of cleanup at the end of it. There's going to be, you know, a thing of popcorn mist or a little bit of trash or whatever, and they're going through and checking that over. But this is for specifically when, when we have, we have staff come in in the morning, and then they're allocating additional staff time and additional hours into cleaning up a facility. So I mean, if someone turns around and walks away from the facility, we can add two or three or four man-hours of staffing to clean up that facility after them, which then in turn takes them away from doing their regular duties at that time. And so that's, that's really where we're looking at with, if they're coming in and they grab a couple, you know, they grab a bag of trash, and they pick up a little, a few things, that's kind of expected. We're coming in and checking everything over. But it's when it starts incurring additional staff time and taking away from, from that, that's really where these fees are going to apply.
Jason, thank you for that clarification. Also, I, I believe that we just celebrated our two-year anniversary of having Memorial Field up and running in the grandstands. Could you speak to, over those two years, how, give us a scorecard on how we've done, like, an A is you're amazing, F, we have failed with cleaning up as a public?
With cleaning up? It's an A.
Thank you.
I mean, the user groups go in, they sweep, they try. You know, I can't say that things don't get missed, but it's a big facility. So everybody's got to go through and take their time and do it. So.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
We will now proceed with the public hearing. The public hearing is now open. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. Madam Clerk, let's start again with city residents. All hands will now be lowered on Zoom. For those attending on Zoom, if you are a resident inside Sandpoint city limits, and you wish to speak, please raise your hand at this time.
Madam President, there are no hands raised.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any city residents who have signed up here in the chambers to testify on this matter?
Madam President, no one has signed up to testify on this matter.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who wishes to speak regarding city fees? Seeing none with all, excuse me, we will now move on to agenda item seven B one, consideration of adoption.
Madam President?
I'm sorry, yes?
We'll close the public hearing?
Oh, yes, sorry. The public hearing is now closed. Don't do this all the time. We will now move on to agenda item seven B one, consideration of adoption of new city fees and changes to existing fees and fee schedule. Counsel, is there any deliberation, or do you have any final questions for staff? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution for adoption of new city fees and changes to existing fees and fee schedule.
So moved.
Second.
This will be a roll call vote?
Counselor Spuro?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes, and I'd just like to thank staff for managing, doing a great job of passing the costs on to the people that are using our facilities and making the city more fiscally responsible. Yes.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. All right, done with public hearings, on to old business items eight A and eight B. First under old business is acceptance of a nine thousand dollar donation from North Idaho Trails Collaborative, sponsored by Kinnick's Land Trust for Little Sand Creek Watershed Recreation Planning, including trail planning, professional services, and a proposed agreement with the International Mountain Bicycling Association for development of a recreation trails concept plan. I will now yield the floor to Parks Planning and Development Manager Maeve Nevins-Lauter.
Thank you very much. This is really exciting. We have a giant thank you, huge gratitude to give out to our community partners with the Kinnick's Land Trust, the Sand, or Sandpoint Nordic Club, the Ponderay Peddlers, POP, and anyone that supports them. So really, this is a community-wide grant of funding that is going to be designated towards our recreation plan that we're doing up in the watershed that you've heard about quite a bit. This portion of the recreation plan is specifically looking at the trails that are existing and trails that are desired. So through that effort, we have decided to move forward with a contract with the International Mountain Bike Association. They're otherwise known as IMBA. They are national leaders in the realm of trail planning, trail design, and they actually have a branch called IMBA's Trail Solutions Branch. And that branch actually focuses on the planning and design side as well as the building. They do come with a team of landscape architects, planners, similar skillset to mine, which are focused on access. So they're going to be looking at existing access points and potential other ones. They're going to look at existing conditions and give us an assessment report and a robust trail concept plan that we can then utilize for partnership agreements, funding. And also, they're going to be focusing predominantly on the section in the lower basin where there's existing downhill trails. And we do believe by the time we're done with this, this portion of the task, it will be an appendix to the recreation management plan. But we'll also be able to use it next year for, it'll essentially be a shovel-ready plan that the peddlers can go ahead and move forward with the reconstruction of the existing downhill trails. So stay tuned for public outreach on that. But we really want to give a great big thanks to our community partners, because without them, we couldn't actually make this contract happen. And it shows the dedication towards the watershed trails, the recreation, and four-season recreation with that, I'll note. So yeah, thank you very much. Any questions?
Counsel have any questions?
Did you make that, that last point that you made, the four seasons recreation up here, and the reach that that has for our growing population? The, the Sandpoint Nordic Club is one of the newer clubs, and they're doing such an amazing job up there. And obviously, we give a ton of credit to POP and all the volunteers out there. But our ability to really treat our, our area as a four-season park and get out there and enjoy it, so well done, everyone.
Yes, and I actually would like to give them special accolades because they, you know, they're very quiet in comparison to some, some of our other groups and myself included. And they, they really have found their voice. They reached out to me, my first moved here last fall, and they were some of the first people to welcome me and give me a tour of the watershed and said, you know, we just want to let you know that we really care about wide trails and getting, getting to understand what that meant has been my mission over the last year. So I have skied with them, of course, but they're really an inclusive group, and they really care particularly about the children and getting the youth out into the outdoors. So their mission is beyond just skiing and beyond just winter sports, but it's really about inclusion of others. And they also discussed a lot of their values lie in that wider trail. And that's because they see the value of being together and being a community outside. So we're looking for those opportunities as well as providing that upper elevation access for them in the, in the four seasons. And you know, with that also comes shared use trails, where we're, we're looking at other sports too. You know, what would it look like if we had Nordic skiing, hiking, trail running, mountain biking, or fatpiking on the same trail system? And how can we balance all those users? And then there's so many other users that we're talking to now, just started our planning from the recreation perspective. And we're hearing about sports we've never really considered before. You know, when you're thinking ten to twenty years down the line, what does a hovercraft, one wheel, who knows what device look like? So we have to look at all of that when we're considering that there is this incredible corridor, and we want to place value on not just, of course, the clean water, but all of the aesthetics that go with it and protecting the natural resources. So anyway, thank you for your time.
I think I saw a hovercraft on Sand Creek.
I bet you did.
Go by my office? It was crazy. Yeah, anyway, and.
Right.
I wasn't.
Every couple of years, there's a whole new round of toys out there.
But it was truly amazing. I'd never seen anything like it. I'm like, what is that? Yeah. Anyway, thank you. All right, would anybody from the public care to comment on this matter?
No, Madam President.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the donation agreement with North Idaho Trails Collaborative, as sponsored by Kinnick's Land Trust. So moved.
Second.
This will be a roll call vote?
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor Spuro?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Motion passes. I will now entertain a motion approving the resolution for the professional services agreement with the International Mountain Bicycling Association for development of a recreation trails concept plan for the Little Sand Creek Watershed Recreation Master Plan.
So moved.
This will be a roll call vote?
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Spuro?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Welker?
Yes, and I would just like to thank Maeve for all her work on this. Obviously, this is a huge step forward for our community as a whole. our community as a whole, for the trail, uh, trail organizations in the community as well. And I'm super honored and happy to be a part of it and to say yes. Thank you.
I concur, Mr. Welker.
Counselor McAllister.
Yes.
Counselor Groth.
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, and my husband planted most of those trees on the watershed, just so you I had to get mine in there too, right? Yeah, yeah. Uh, next under old business, staff seeks authorization to request proposals for replacement of a banned screen at the wastewater treatment plan. This request follows council's June 15th approval to contract for procurement documents and services for this purchase to replace an older screen with a new one, which will serve as a bridge project to help the plant operate until construction of the new plant. Does counsel have any questions on this item?
I just wondered if Greg brought a sample or a prop.
That's what I was thinking. No? Okay. Would anyone from the public care to comment on this matter?
No, Madam President.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to authorize a request for proposals for wastewater treatment plan banned screen replacement.
So moved. Second.
This will be a roll call vote. Counselor McAllister.
Yes.
Counselor Rule.
Yes.
Counselor Sprow.
Yes.
Counselor Groth.
Yes.
Counselor Welker.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. The final item under old business is authorization from counsel for staff to solicit bids for the remodel of the second floor of City Hall in order to address building safety issues, ADA accessibility improvements, energy efficiency, and comfort improvements to add functional office and meeting space. I will now yield the floor to City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton.
Thank you, Council President. I think I'm going to be brief on this. We've addressed a lot of all of those issues that in previous conversations and strategic planning, all of those issues you have highlighted in our staff report. Um, and for layout, um, building layout, we included that in our staff packet as well. Uh, this is the proposed new layout in, um, the documents that would go out to bid that are in your packet. So to kind of walk you through this a little bit, here are the stairs coming in from first floor, uh, right outs, right in the entry at the first floor. This actually will be closed and not open access throughout the day. Uh, we are including in this remodeling an office area, which is up here in the corner into a another large conference room with windows because we've been known for having our conference room on the interior wall, and it was really miserable meeting instead of conference room. So this gives windows and sometimes we're in work sessions that can be a full-day meeting. So this gives some light outside and also gives us an area where we can fit a larger group besides just back here in council chambers. Meeting space is always a challenge in government buildings. We've maximized, again, um, consistency with office space to provide as many exterior offices as we can throughout City Hall with actually windows into all of those offices, but then have included cubicle space as well as in the middle. And, um, we have already purchased the cubicles for this interior space from, uh, the old Coldwater Creek building. So those are sitting in storage and we got really a great deal on those. So we're not having to buy those new and they fit in and will look really nice in our interior. Um, I think a really important point to highlight overall with this design is over on this west end of the building, our infamous outdoor stairway that is not very safe, um, and isn't even fully bolted down. So this brought remodel, um, actually encloses those stairs so that they're on the inside of the building. And so for our staff incoming and going, they would exit, cards, uh, card swipe in into that stairway and be able to get into the building both upstairs and down. And then instead of really having us separated in our office environment with having to go outside and with locking doors up and down, actually, our doors would be open between the first floor and the second floor. So there's just this exterior floor, which will will allow us to flow between our office spaces and better enhances our ability to work together as a team and collaboratively the way that we do, but across floors. So collaboration has worked really well on the first floor. It kind of works on the second floor. It doesn't work very well with our current design between those on the first and the second floor. So this really integrates, um, our staff across both floors at City Hall. Um, and as mentioned in the staff, uh, report also addresses insulation comfort issues, insulation above our sprinkler system so that it doesn't freeze. Uh, putting heads back on our sprinkler system that previously have been removed to avoid freezling, but then take us out of compliance with, uh, fire code. So, um, this gets us back into building code. Fire code improves ADA accessibility throughout City Hall um, and gives us that separation from our public space and our staff workspace at City Hall as well. So a timeline for this project is, um, if counsel approves tonight, this will hit the street spot to bid next week. Uh, then we will give about three weeks, uh, three to four weeks for bid proposals and hopefully be in construction this fall. Um, again, we'll be moving staff around with some staff able to move between fire, police, and having to move a portion of our staff again over to Community Hall. But once we get through this final remodel of this facility, we'll be able to reopen uh, Community Hall again, full-time for public use, which unfortunately, as we've been moving through the our iterations of remodel at this building, we haven't been able to do. But on the other side, um, it's really had a great benefit for us because we've had somewhere that our staff could go without us having to pay a lease or a rent at another facility for staff in the interim.
Excellent. I will say that when we took the tour, that staircase was frightening, especially when you realized it was a bolted down.
They were nice bounce though.
It's hard that you can't see out the door. So if you're standing on that very small landing and somebody's coming out.
Yeah.
Uh, you may or may not fall off. So this, it is greatly improves safety for our staff and ultimately our ability to better serve the public and meet with the public throughout City Hall.
Excellent. Does counsel have any questions? Would anybody from the public care to comment on this matter?
No, Madam President.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to authorize the solicitation of bids for the City Hall second floor remodel project. This will be a roll call vote. Oh, sorry.
So moved. Second.
This will be a roll call vote. Counselor Dick.
Yes.
Counselor Welker.
Yes.
Counselor Groth.
Yes.
Counselor Sprow.
Yes.
Counselor Rule.
Yes.
Counselor McAllister.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, the final item, new business. By the line of on the agenda this evening is a proposal for a one-time market wage adjustment for Sandpoint employees. I will now yield the floor to City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton.
It's me again.
You again.
As our final item of tonight, what we are requesting from council is approval to do a one-time market adjustment for employees of the city in the amount of $1,350 per employee. We did not include this as a COLA adjustment that we're building on year after year again in order for us to achieve that balance in our next year's budget as well as moving forward between our ability to invest in projects as well as maintain a workforce and be competitive with our workforce. Given some of the increases that we're seeing in, um, employers in our area, we felt that it is most prudent to address some increase for our employees who are impacted by the increasing inflation rates. And we do have a number of employees at the city, unfortunately, with the cost of housing that are having to move further and further, um, outside of city limits um, in order to find affordable housing and and travel in, and they've been impacted by gas costs, et cetera. Bonner County has, um, some fairly significant proposed wage increases in their budget, particularly in public safety services as well as road and bridge. And, um, for us to stay competitive, uh, we're recommending that council approve a one-time adjustment adjustment. The way that this would work and what we have done over the year for reminder for council, January 1st across all city employee groups. Uh, in this year's budget, we had a 2% market adjustment COLA built into our budget, and that was given to employees across the city effective January 1st. Um, our employees, according to our, uh, compensation system, with the exception of fire fire employees who have a different structure because it's a negotiated contract, they're union and they're union employees and are able to negotiate a contract. Our other employees fall in our grade-in-step system. So our employees on an annual basis are, um, eligible until they reach the top of their grade for, uh, an annual step increase, which varies based on where you are in the system between about 2.1% and 2.8%. So for employees moving through the step system, they're getting that on an annual basis in addition to their market adjustment. Now, in past years, uh, the city had been, um, unfortunately, in a financial situation where it couldn't do COLA increases and there wasn't budget. And so there was a hold put on step increases and the compensation structure as well. Um, as we adopted financial policies about four years ago and did a set aside of reserves for emergencies, for stabilization, we have not been in that situation, and it's something we consider as we are adding positions year over year, again, the ability to maintain the compensation structure as adopted, as well as to address market adjustments as needed, and the market is moving. So uh, our employees did get step increases this year. In April 1st of this year, um, council had approved what would be a, a, uh, 2% COLA for all employees at the city, non-union employees who are participating in the city's benefits plan because of savings in the benefits plan. We were going to include that increase in this fiscal year budget, but with all the escalation and the competition that we were seeing with positions across the government sector, we up-fronted that to April 1st. And again, that was for all of our employee groups who were participating in city offered medical plans. That is all of our employees except at the city, except for our union employees who chose through negotiations to go to a different plan and have not seen the savings that we have seen in our city negotiated benefits. Uh, we have included in the budget, which council passed, a 2% COLA effective January 1st of 2023. Um, but again, given the wage pressures and looking what's happening with governments around us, we feel it's prudent for council to consider a one-time adjustment for employees. It averages out across our employees at the city to an average of about 2% overall to our employee group. Obviously, that depends on what their, uh, annual wage and hourly rate is. So those at the top end of the scale fall under 2%, but particularly when we get the lower end of the scale, it's up above 2%. Where we landed at 1350 is that also, um, Sarah did an analysis that after benefits, after retirement take or after taxes, after retirement taken out, for all employees across the board, it amounts to about a thousand-dollar one-time payment. We would propose doing this as a one-time payment, um, separate from a paycheck and our timing on it that we are proposing is in, uh, in November, um, right before the Thanksgiving holiday on November 23rd. That is our last pay period of the month of November. We would chase that pay period with a second check that would process on November 25th, right after the Thanksgiving holiday, around the holiday season for employees, um, and be processed as a separate payment. So it's not stacking onto regular compensation and increasing taxes that are taken out of that. Um, it also times with, we're in a time of year when, um, we also get groups trying to pull from one another for employees when we are in snow removal season and some other critical, uh, times for us. So again, it keeps us competitive and comparable with other employers. It's always a chan- challenge in the public sector, um, because our benefits are richer than the private sector and, um, in average times, usually that's appreciated and, um, you have a lot of competitiveness for the stability and the benefits provided to government jobs. In times of inflation like what we're seeing right now, you see such significant on the check increases in the private industry. It becomes tough for governments to compete with that when people are looking at the bottom line on the check. When inflation goes back down or the economy retracts, uh, then what you tend to see is a move back towards government jobs, which also justifies this approach with the one-time increase as opposed to stacking that over time. Uh, so that is our recommendation to council. Where our proposal in terms of dollars to pay for that is from budget savings in this fiscal year as a result of unfilled positions. It's taken us longer to fill some of our positions, um, just because of the job economy, the climate that we're in. And so we've had savings in that regard. And then as a result of not being able to fill positions, it also has meant we have a number of employees across the city who have taken on extra work. It has particularly affected a lot of our exempt employees who are not paid overtime and instead are just working extra hours. So this recognizes some of those impacts with our employees as well. One thing I would note for council is while we are requesting approval of this body for this across the city, we still would need on the fire side to negotiate with our two partners in our fire system under our JPA because they share in the cost, um, for those employees. And again, that is kind of a different group of employees that, um, they're a union employee. We are proposing and have budget available in the city budget that they be included as well. But based on our fire negotiations, discussions with the other entities, fire wants to be treated all as one. So the chief is in conversations with the other two fire districts about it, but this would bring an additional cost to those fire districts, but, uh, they have some position savings as well that he feel that he feels that they may be favorable to this option as well. But we are seeking council approval for a one-time increase for employees.
Thank you. Questions?
Just a comment. Um, you know, I I hear all the time the government needs to be run more like a private corporation. Well, this is a good example of our city government kind of, you know, stepping up to compete with the private sector. And, you know, we, um, I I think that the city does a fantastic job of running super efficiently and using some of those savings that we have is a, this is a really good use of it. So just to be clear, this is not $1,350 average per employee. That's an absolute amount that will go to every employee.
That is correct.
And I assume an FTE employee would get, you know, like a point four employee would get point four of that, or is it every employee?
Actually, at the city right now, we actually only have, um, one employee who's less than 40 hours a week.
Oh, is that right?
Still considered in full-time status.
Okay.
And so we only have one. This is 1350 across our ranks, every employee.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
And I think it's great that it'll happen at the holiday season. That's really, that's really great. Uh, would anybody from the public care to comment on this matter?
No, Madam President.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to authorize a one-time market wage adjustment for Sandpoint.
Second.
This will be a roll call vote. Counselor Welker.
Yes.
Counselor McAllister.
Yes.
Counselor Dick.
Yes.
Counselor Rule.
Yes.
Counselor Sprow.
Yes.
Counselor Groth.
You all are worth every diamond dollar. Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, with no further business before the council, this meeting is now adjourned at 7:19. Have a great night.